We're ready? Okay, I'm gonna call this finance meeting to order. Today's the first of September. It's 12:20. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the prior meeting. Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Request for the transfer of funds as attached for the committee approval. I'll entertain a motion for that.
That's yours, right? Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion for that. Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Bruno. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Item number two is the request and items to be discussed by the county administrator. Mr. Moore.
The typical journal reports that have already been done are in your packet. If there are any questions about those, I'll do my best. That's under two, item 2A.
Got a motion to move that? Motion by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. McDevitt. Need, I need a motion on that, don't I?
No, not for the journal.
Not for the journal report itself? Okay. I'll take that motion off the floor. Thank you. Any discussion on the journal report? Okay, 2B.
2B or not 2B? This is the annual approval that this board does, comes through the Finance Committee, of the budget for the Regional Planning Board. The Regional Planning Board's five-county memorandum of agreement outlines the process by which their budget is approved every year. That's in your packet, and as are the top-line sheets for this entity. I think they do great work. That's my thought. The current amount that Warren County pays is $12,954, and the proposed amount for 2022 is $13,213.
I'll move that.
Moved by Mr. Thomas, second by Ms. Bremer. Discussion.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bremer.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to say that the director was here earlier, a couple hours ago, to present on this particular topic, so I...
She's back.
Oh, good. Oh, good. And I do support this. I think that they've made some really great contributions in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Beth, did you want to make any comments?
Hi, everyone. No, I'm just here to answer questions if anybody has any. The one big item change would be the addition of a junior planner position here to be hired at the beginning of next year.
And that cost is being subsidized through all the counties, correct?
Correct, and mostly through the grants that we get.
Excellent. Okay. Okay, so any other questions for Beth? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Thanks, Beth. Thank you very much. 2C, Mr. Moore.
2C. I have, we have Joy LaFountain to present these items. These were missed on her standing committee agenda.
Okay. Joy?
Is she not here?
She was here. What, I'm sorry. She was here hours ago. I told her we would send her a message. I'm sure she's on her way. If you could just lay this on the table for about 10 minutes until she walks up.
Sure. We can come back to 2C. Okay. Let's go to 2D.
Same, same. We need Joy for 2D.
Okay, so we'll come back to 2C and 2D, once we get Joy. All right, very good. Let's go to 3. Request items to be discussed by the county treasurer. Mike, are you on with us?
Yes, I am. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. What do we got on A?
All right, with the settlement of the CSEA contract, we need to increase the salary accounts for certain departments to cover the amounts of the raises that were set in the CSEA contract. We reached out to all the departments to see if they could cover any of the increases. Several of them can. DSS and one could cover all of the increases in salary. Highway covered quite a few, but this is the balance of what we need to take care of the contract. Also, I want to say that the sheriff is going to be able to cover all of the increases for the two new contracts over there.
Okay, so you're not looking for any from contingency, are you? Or are you?
No, it's gonna have to come from the general fund.
Okay.
Because it's $300,000 is the one, one of the transfers.
Right, $300,151, the other one's $26,014.
Yeah. Both will have to come from the general fund.
Thank you. Do I have a mo, anybody want to make a motion and take this to the floor? Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. McDevitt. Okay, discussion on this. Here, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas?
This is for 2022 salaries?
This is for 2022, Swan?
Well, no, this is for the finish of this year. Because we had to do some retros, and we have to, some of these salaries increased July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
So this is for this year. We have not, that, the 2022s are gonna have to be considered later.
Nice drawing, though.
Yeah, well.
Woo! Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Mike, if you'd hold on just a minute, we've got Joy here. We had to skip over, but she's now back.
That's fine. Just let me know when you want me back.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Be momentarily. Okay.
I'll make a motion to move forward with 2C and D.
2C and D combined? Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. Okay. We'll have a discussion. I believe she's passing out the information.
Thank you.
We're looking at 2C and D. CC rider.
Chairman, so these are dollar amounts covered by grant funding?
We're gonna let Joy explain this. Okay, thank you. Joy, when you go a moment, would you take the podium?
I already have, thank you.
But you gotta bring it back if you take it. Thanks. It's awful heavy.
Okay. Claudia, what was that question again?
Um, just to confirm that this is all grant funding?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions in addition to that, or?
I'll entertain any questions from the committee or any other supervisors here.
Move forward?
Okay, move forward.
Okay, they first want us to authorize a contract for legal aid, to pay for paralegal and case management support, all out of grant funds for a three-year term, not to exceed 58,514. Also, to amend the county budget to accept those funds from contract 110052, distribution 11.
Okay, well, we, would you go through D also? Because we've combined the two in a motion, so...
Gotcha.
Is that D she just said? Oh, I'm sorry.
Want me to move on to the next request to amend the budget?
Have we talked about C?
C? Legal Aid Society? Are you talking about the resolution request, or?
Yes. We're talking about the request to authorize a new contract with the Legal Aid Society of Northern New York.
Yep, this is an additional contract that covers this particular grant funds and relieves the same containment for the paralegal and for case management support.
Okay, so do we have discussion on C and D? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Wow, that's it. That's it, Joy. Another stellar job.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for rates and rate back up.
What's that?
Thanks for rates and rate back up.
You're welcome. Thanks, man.
Brett, yeah. Thank you, Joy. Thanks again.
Yes. Oh.
Okay, we're gonna resume now on the agenda. We're on 3B with Mr. Swan. Mr. Swan, take it away.
Thank you. The 3B is a request to pay for portion of the courses that a staff member of mine is taking at Adirondack Community, excuse me, SUNY Adirondack. It's a count, an accounting-related course, and she is trying to get an associate's degree. She's worked in my department for over 15 years, is a good valued employee, and has decided that it's time to get a degree.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Bremer, second by Mr. McDevitt. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. And now C, Mr. Swan.
All right, this is, this is concerns giving me the authority to go out and borrow money for various projects that we've talked about. The first one is a million dollars for the countryside. The second one is $700,000 for the repair of the wall in Bolton, going out onto Green Island. And the third, which was in your agenda, calls for 3.5 million for DPW paving projects. Actually, after a discussion last night with Kevin Hayjos, that has been bumped up to, he was requesting 6.5 million, which would have given us an, over an $8 million band. I want to keep that under 8 million, so I cut his request back to 6.2 million. Now, this is a discussion that the board and this committee, I guess, are gonna have to have as to whether or not you're gonna actually go out and borrow this additional money. Just as a note, the payments for one each year for the next five years would be about 1.5 million on an $8 million band. The two projects, sunny, or countryside and the Bolton Wall, I think are high priorities and I think need to be approved. The DPW work, that, I'm not an expert in that, so I'm gonna defer to Kevin and the DPW committee about that one.
Okay, I'm going to now, Kevin, are you on?
I am here.
Okay, Mr. Hayjos, do you want to give us, inform us on your request for 6.2 million?
Sure. So, as you all are aware, last year we discussed doing kind of a two-year project to really, and I don't want to, I don't want to say catch up on roads, because, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we'll ever catch up. And from the area that we live in, it's dependent year to year. I just came to budget last week with my five-year plan for roads, and as we looked at the roads, I had approximately 6.5 million budgeted for next year. Or basically, next year is gonna be a reconstruction year of construction projects. With that being said, my outline years, 2, 3, 4, and 5, had a budgeted amount of approximately $5.1 million each year. Now, as the discussion, you know, the discussion involved in budget was, can we get those outline years down to $4 million? And then that would be, maybe need your lift in future years as far as the budget goes, and not much of a, not as much of a tax burden on the taxpayers. I can, but the discussion was, can we bring stuff back into, say, 2022 and get a bigger year next year? So, you know, I looked at it, I talked with Mike Swan about it regarding, he didn't want to hit that kind of 10 million mark on a, on a ban, because then he would go into a, and Mike, you correct me if I'm wrong, a 20-year bond. We didn't want to go that route. So, I looked at the projects and, you know, the bottom line is, we have, I guess, I want to say pegged out our position, $5.1 million every year. Subject to change. I mean, I can't tell you three years down the road from now that this is what my road shape is gonna be, and I can only give you kind of an estimate based on, you know, history and my knowledge of pavement and so on and so forth, that this is approximate how much we're gonna need. So, I looked at it and said, okay, maybe I'll either take a ton of money out of 2023, which would be year two, bring it back to 22 so we can do projects, which, as we discussed last year, one year, which this year was, is a preservation year, and then next year would be a reconstruction year, and then the following year would be a preservation year, and so on and so forth. That allows us to catch up on, a lot of the roads are in very poor shape by taking a construction year. So, Ryan had asked me during budget, and as well as Supervisor Thomas, is there a way that I can get this working in next year? I can. I have the staff and capability now to be, to put this work out in the 2022 budget, which will allow us to get quite a bit more work done next year. In fact, as I said, I'll take the 2023-year projects and bring them back to 2022, which would be preservation projects. And then I will kind of divvy up the following years of, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna bring it to the 4 million mark, but I'll reduce those years by what I do in 2023, and I'll kind of, gotta move the numbers around. Again, all subject to change in future years, because I just can't predict that far out of what's gonna happen with roads. So, with that being said, I can take on, I'm thinking we can take on about $3 million more worth of work going into next year and get it completed next year. My, as I said in budget, my only issue will be having enough staff to review these projects in the field when the work is going on. But I volunteered to my engineering department that I would go outside and review these projects when they're under construction. With that being said, we also have our term agreement with consultants that if we needed somebody to inspect a three-day project or four-day project for us, if we had a lot of them going on, we could use a consultant to do that work. So, that's the long and short of it. So now that would put us in a potential of doing 9.5, give or take, $9.2 million of the project next year.
Okay, so, Mr. Swan, are you looking to change that amount to borrow for banding?
Yes. Yeah, to a total of 8 million. It'd be, it would be, well, I'm gonna do it under three resolutions, and our outside bond council has already written the resolutions, they're ready to go. I'm just waiting for approval from this meeting so that we can forward them to the board meeting. But yeah, amend the total for the DPW to 6.2 million, and the total borrowing would be 8 million.
So then, Resolution 3C should state, if I'm not, if I'm correct, resolution, request for resolution on the county treasurer to borrow 8 million to provide funding for the renovation products.
Isn't it 7.9? 1,700,000, 6, 6.2 million?
Yeah. 7.9, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, so, okay, so for clarification, then you're asking that 3C be changed to request to borrow 7.9 for the funding of those projects?
Correct.
We're all on the same page? Okay. Okay, Mr. Moore?
One question, Mr. Treasurer. If it's determined that we don't need the full 6.2 million, can we borrow a lesser amount when we go to market?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing that I'm kind of concerned about with this is that, at one point, we had talked about using some of the stimulus money for highway purposes, but if we go this way, we're not gonna be able to, because we're already committing to the fact that we may be borrowing the money, and you can't pay debt service with the stimulus money. So, just to put that out there.
Well, that's a, that's a big question, you know, then. I mean, if we can pay, you know, that's a good point you made, Mr. Swan. I mean, if we commit today to the 7.9 million band, we will not be able to spend, as you said, the...
We may not. We may not, okay? I can't say it's definitely, but it's a concern of mine, because it looks like we're trying to borrow the money, and then we use the stimulus money to try to pay the debt, and you're not supposed to use stimulus for debt service.
Right. And that, and so, I guess my question would be, when will we know more clarity? Because if we make, we go forward today, right, and then we find out, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot a little bit, I'm not sure if that's the best route. Any thoughts, Mr. Garrity?
Well, Mike, once you find out, though, you said you could borrow less than the 7.9 million, right?
Correct.
So if you find that you can use the stimulus money, could you make this less or no?
Yeah, we could. And it's not, we can use the stimulus money for roadwork, but we just have to make that decision to do it. And no decision has been made yet on the money.
Okay, but there's always a chance that you could reduce your, the amount that you borrow.
Yes. Yeah, this is, I don't, if you give me approval, when I actually go to borrow the money, I don't have to borrow as much as said in the resolutions. It's kind of like not to exceed that amount. You've given me the authority for these different projects. If we decide that the DPW project is not going to be 6.2 million, then we don't have to borrow that amount of money. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, then, Ms. Bremer, then Mr. McGowan.
Right, we're giving him an approval essentially and not to exceed, but once, once the treasurer actually goes to market, borrows this money, then we're to, then we're getting into payback debt service. You can't...
Correct.
Stimulus money to offset debt service, can't do it. You also can't put the stimulus money in your rainy day fund. What you can do with the stimulus money is you can, out of the revenue recovery amount, you can designate the, any of the revenue recovery funds to general government, and general government can cover road projects that year. Road projects in the operating budget. But once, once you're talking about paying out of the debt service budget, you cannot use the ARPA money.
Hmm. Okay, Ms. Bremer?
With the ARPA money, I mean, I know we're trying to be very deliberate. We took all, we got all these survey responses, and we have our working group coming, meeting coming up very soon, so I'm hesitant to just say we're gonna bond out all this money instead of using, potentially using some of the ARPA money for this purpose. Although, I personally don't think we should use all of the ARPA money for roads and bridges, but, but to use it for multiple various purposes. I guess, I'd like to know what, this is a pretty big ban, what is the cost to the county of going into the ban versus just budgeting more in roads and bridges for 2022?
You're saying that we budget an extra 6.1 million from Mr. Thomas in the budget? I, I don't know, that's a big number.
Well, I guess the other question is, are we actually going to go through the whole 6.2 million in 2022? I know Kevin was trying to speak to that, and I guess I didn't catch it all. I mean, one concern is that we have one sheet of paper for an $8 million bond. And Mike said there's resolutions prepared, like, where are they?
Well, unfortunately, I just got them yesterday, and I am not able to get to my office today, so I was not able to forward that stuff to you, and I apologize for that. It will be forthcoming.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, Mr. Moore, did you?
Just seems like a little rushed.
Yeah, yeah, two points. One on the timing and the other on, and I don't, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Hayjos, but I think that the intention is going to be whatever the gross amount of road projects we have, nine-point-whatever, and we can firm that up with he and I and Mike Swan. The intention is do that work, because we have to get bids out for that work before the end of the year. But I believe the reason why this is coming today is we have to go out to market to do countryside and to do the Bolton Bridge. The treasurer wants to go to market once. There are administrative costs associated with doing that, and interest rates have the potential to change. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Garrity?
Well, I would just, yeah, Mike is a cop of borrowing, and the rates are very, very favorable to borrowing money to do some of this work. If you, if you add it to the budget, you're, there are taxes on everybody for a long, longer period of time, so I, I think...
You'll lower your bond rating, too, with that kind of a hit to the fund balance.
I think, I think it's a wise decision of the treasurer.
Other, other comments other than Bowser? I think Bowser agreed. Ms. Bremer?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but the taxpayers are gonna take this hit one way or the other. Where we, we're not magically gonna pay back the ban, right? I mean, I guess we're just spreading that cost out over time, and no one answered my question as to what are the administrative costs of an $8 million band versus, we have a pretty healthy general fund. If we need to get countryside and the retaining well done, why don't we take the 1.7 million out of general?
Bowser didn't like that, I don't believe. Maybe, yes. I will throw that question. Mr. Swan, did you hear that, those two questions from Ms. Bremer?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have a dog that seems to be barking at the mailman. I apologize for that.
Newman?
The, um, the administrative, the, the, it would cost about 1.2 million in principal return, and about 1.5 million per year for interest and principal. So that's the cost each year. So we're gonna pay back, um, probably $500,000 or $600,000 in interest over the course of the five years. We will also, every year, there's about an 800 to $1,000 administrative fee for the lawyers and all the filing costs and everything else that we have to do.
Was there another question, Ms. Bremer, that you have for Mr. Swan?
About using, getting 1.7 million out of the general fund.
Okay, well, that would be a question. Go ahead, Mr. Swan.
That's fine. I mean, I, you know, I was asked to do this, to get the money for these two projects, the 1.7 million, and the discussion moved towards bonding it. If the board decides not to do that, then we take it out of the general fund. I mean, that's, I'm just kind of trying to do what I was asked to do here, as far as trying to find the money to do these two small, these two smaller projects that, that I really feel need to be done. How we finance them is the board's decision.
Mr. Thomas, did you want to make any comment on that? Not to put any credit, I'm just wondering if...
Well, that's, that's conceivable that we could do that, absolutely.
To take it out of the general, or?
Yeah, I don't know where else we would get it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we did, if we want that route, that would be the only route other than if we banned. Yeah, I mean, it's A or B, the way I, right, it's option one or option two. Any other discussion on that? So I guess, at this time, I'll entertain a motion. If you want to move it forward, if you don't, you don't. That's, that's the committee's preference, so does anybody want to make a motion, or not? Mr. McDevitt, would you like to make a motion?
And I think what Kevin said, I mean, the cost of money today is, is just so attractive that it just makes sense to, in my opinion, to, to borrow the money.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Thomas. Okay, further discussion?
He hasn't borrowed the money yet.
Yeah, he hasn't done it yet. This is just approving a resolution that authorizing him for a 7.9 million dollar Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. We have one abstention. Okay, we'll move along. Thank you, Mr. Swan. We're on now number four, which is Mr. McGowan, Mr. Hayjos, and Mr. Matt. 4A, do you want to handle that, Mr. Hayjos, or?
Sorry, I'm trying to eat my lunch. I will handle it. The first one is a request to appropriate funds in the amount of 15,000 from our reserve, and this is to cover the pavement markings that the FAA require, are requiring us to do.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion for this? Motion by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. Beatty. Discussion? Discussion, Mr. McGowan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, were you able to get ahold of Mr. Matt on that good news yet? Possibly good news.
I was, and I was hoping to bring it up at our next committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayjos. Back to lunchie.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Okay, we're rolling right along. 4B, Mr. Hayjos?
That is a request to authorize funds in the amount of $2,430 for, from our reserve county buildings and budget code, and this is to finalize the remainder of the work that was associated with the generator swap-out.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Okay, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hayjos. We're now on number five on your agenda. This is from the Economic Growth and Development Committee. It's chaired by Ms. Hogan. Is Lisa with us too? She's not. Is Ms. Hogan on there? She is not. Okay, well, I'll read it to you. To request to amend the county budget in the amount of $110,310 to accept an annual allocation of temporary assistance to needy family funds.
I'll move that.
You move that, Ms. Bremer? Okay, do I have a second by Mr. McGee? Do I have discussion? Okay, hearing, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we're on number six. Referral from the county real property. Lexi, what do we got here?
The resolution is to transfer funds from the Reserve Environmental Testing Fund to pay for the design plan for the asbestos and lead abatement in the public's garage.
Okay, do I have somebody who wants to move that? Moved by Mr. McGee. Second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks, Lexi. That was painless. Okay, number seven. It's a referral from the Health Services Committee. It's chaired by Ms. Frazier. Ms. Frazier is here today. Would you like to handle number 7A, please?
Certainly. The request to amend the county budget in the amount of $78,433 to reflect receipt of the change of utilization action plan grant funding to support the current expenses related to promote and increase COVID-19 vaccine and other vaccine.
Okay, do I have somebody who wants to move that? Moved by Mr. McGee, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? I see you're on, Ms. Jones. Did you want to make any comment, Janelle?
No, I'm good, but thank you for the consideration.
More than welcome. Okay, any, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, very good. We're on 7B. Go ahead, Ms. Frazier.
Okay, request to amend the county budget in the amount of $191,929 to reflect receipt of grant funding from Health Research, Inc., or ELC, to support expenses related to working with the public and private schools in Warren County.
Okay, do I have somebody who wants to move that? Moved by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Bruno. Okay, discussion. Janelle, do you want to pine on this at all or?
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a grant that we've been given to facilitate testing and screening in schools to try to keep kids in school. So we're looking to move money in different pots to be able to support our schools. Part of it is contractual because we are looking to have a contract with Quadrant to be able to do male health tests. That's a lab. A second prong of that is we are looking to buy equipment to put in the schools for rapid testing for the school nurses to try to maybe help symptomatic people if it's going to facilitate quicker contact tracing. And then the third part of that is we're looking to purchase Binax cards, which is another form of a rapid test, more to screen those people that don't have symptoms that are in high risk activities such as sports, band, things like that. So we're just looking to get the right, we got notification of the grant August 2nd and they were asking for a quick budget and now we're kind of seeing more how we're spending the money. So now we just need to put the money in the right places.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Further discussion? So Janelle, this is approximately half a million dollars that they're going to be giving us to make sure the schools, both public and private, have the necessary means to do the COVID testing, correct? Is that kind of recapping it or?
That's correct. The actual grant amount is a little over 1.7 million dollars.
Okay, that's what I want. Okay, thank you.
It's a net, you know, what we spend is what we get reimbursed. I will say that we ran into procurement issues with the rapid testing machines. So we quickly, our fiscal staff worked with purchasing and we were quickly able to purchase the Binax card. So we did just make a $39,000 purchase so that we could ensure that our schools were ready before they start. And they actually came today. So we are prepared.
Excellent. Very good news. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, thank you. And now C, Ms. Frazier?
Request to amend the county budget in the amount of $125 to reflect receipt of donations provided to the home care division.
Moved by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Discussion, Ms. Bremer?
Where did those donations come from?
That's a question for, go ahead. Is that a question for Ms. Frazier?
Well, now, one is, I know for 25, one for 100, but Janelle, I can't remember who they came from.
Janelle?
Okay, so we had a patient in our home care that passed away and some of the friends and family put a donation into our home care because they were appreciative of the care that our agency and specifically one of our nurses provided. So we're looking to put that money into like recruitment, retention, you know. But it was unsolicited, but it came, but we had to have a mechanism to be able to accept it and then amend our budget.
So nice.
That's very nice. That's a very nice piece of good news. Okay, so all, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Janelle. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Frazier. We're on number eight now. Referal from the Public Safety Committee. Now, Mr. Diamond's not here. I don't see, is Mr. Lefar on the phone or, or no? Okay, well, let's read it. Request to amend the county budget in the amount of $1,250 to reflect receipt of grant funding received from the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for Child Passenger Safety Program. So this is just, we got to have a resolution to take the money in, the grant money. Moved by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. McGee. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Nine, referrals from the Public Works. Mr. Conover's not here, but is Mr. Benway or Mr. Hayjos? I see Mr. Hayjos, okay. So we're on 9A. Mr. Hayjos, you want to take that?
Sure. The first one is a request to amend the county budget $1,000 for receipt of a donation from Gretchen Menzies for up on the farm.
Okay, who wants to move that? Moved by Ms. Bremer, second by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? All in favor? I'll call the question.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. B, 9B?
B is to appropriate funds in the amount of $1,500 from A899 Reserve County Railroad Repair to cover the cost of completely shutting down all the signals on the railroad.
Okay, anybody want to move that? Moved by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Discussion, Ms. Bremer?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We're on 9C.
9C is a request to establish a road project, D5112, which is County Route 11 Bolton Landing Riverbank, which the project is currently being constructed as we speak. And this is the amount of $410,000 and we had already done the finance part of it last month. So this is to establish a project and put the money actually into that project.
Okay, moved by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Bruno. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We're on 9D.
The last one we, the last one we have on here is a request to transfer funds in the amount of $3,300 from the contingent account to cover the cost of the household hazardous waste collection days. And again, as I reported in committee, we had another fantastic day of collecting of household hazardous waste above and beyond what we had budgeted money for.
Excellent, excellent. So I have somebody who wants to move this? Moved by Mr. McGee, second by Mr. Bruno. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Hayjos.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here all day.
Yes.
You're welcome.
And Janelle and everybody, thank you. All right, number 10. Referal from the OCTAX Committee, Coordination Committee. Mr. Garrity, you want to take this one?
Sure. The first one's a transfer of $50,000 from the OXY Tax Reserve Fund to tourism special events to cover the cost of special limits of New York for fall games in 2021. That's in the amount of $50,000.
Okay, do I have somebody who wants to move that? Moved by Ms. Bremer, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? I can say that personally, I think this, you know, I speak to just about everybody, if not everybody. It's a great cause, I mean, and they bring a lot of people in and I believe we approved a three year. It will be three year, okay. And I couldn't think of a better cause than, than special need kids. So that's a great one. So any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Very good. What do we got? 10B?
The second one is a transfer of $35,000 from the OXY Tax Reserve Fund to the budget code tourism Oxy Tax contracts in the amount of $35,000. This will cover the cost of doing a contract with Granicus and Granicus will locate all the short-term rentals in the county and make sure that we are collecting, eventually we'll collect our 4% Oxy Tax funds from each one of these. And hopefully, I believe the treasurer's office will share this information with all the towns.
Okay, who wants to move that? Moved by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. McGee. Discussion? Another worthwhile, I think, move by the committee and hopefully the board will approve it, full board. This will more than pay for itself and the fact that they're willing to share with the towns. I think the towns can even save some money on this and, and so this is, in my opinion, it's a winner. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Number 11 is, oh, I'm sorry, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks. Thanks, thanks, Kevin. Okay, number 11 is we need action on the following items approved by Personnel, Administration, Higher Education. 11, two, Mr. Twillinger, you want to take that?
Yes, we discussed this in Personnel and also in the budget meeting before that it's $2,000 being moved to the furniture account in the county attorney's office to replace the desk that Amy Turkot uses there. She has a large L-shaped desk to hold the volumes of work that she has and organize her work. And the one that's there, we've been almost gluing it back together in places.
Chairman, I can move everything through Personnel from that came out from Personnel.
Okay, so two?
Four, six, five and six.
So 2C, four, ABC, five and six, is that what you're recommending?
Yes, correct, Chairman.
Okay, all right. Does everybody have that written down?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas, okay. And you just heard our county attorney on the table, on the desk. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we're rolling. What do we got? Pending items? County Treasurer requested reintroduction of prior request to remove payroll supervisor and payroll technician positions from ESE. You want to, want to take this one?
I, we can defer this till next month. It's in, right now, it's in the hands of civil service and we're reviewing some paperwork on it, so we're not quite ready yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. So we will defer that until further notice. Thank you. Privilege of the floor. Anybody have public comment in this room? First five people sitting over there, okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. McGee. All in favor of adjuring?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Well done, group.